Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, November 5th at 6:03 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez-Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
And Mayor Canning?
Here. If you've not already done so, either turn off your cellphone or silence it. If your cellphone does go off during this meeting, you buy drinks for everyone across the street. Fair enough? All right. Please all stand and join me if you're able to for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and
We did have a study session of the council based on the community survey that will be coming out soon, prior to this meeting, which started at 4:30. As a result, there is food in the back. There was too much food for those of us in attendance, so not only do you get a city council meeting today, but you get a buffet in the back, so please help yourselves at your leisure, and we'll go on from there. We will move on to oral communication. On consent items or non-agendized items, this time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar, or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum, so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. And as a reminder, we operate under Rosenberg's Rules of Order since 2012, and we do not allow for the allotment of one speaker's time to another speaker. With that said, the first card I have for public comment is Chris Rogers. Chris, share with us your name and your address, which I've already done, should you so choose, but you're not required to do so.
I'm not required. I'll just stand here.
You do have to go to the podium, though, because we do have a vast home audience watching this right now.
Okay. Chris Rogers, Calistoga. Do you need to give my address?
Only if you choose to.
Okay. Silver on the trail.
Thank you.
Anyway, so, just a suggestion offered, considering proactive fire prevention, and I was just wanted to suggest that the fire department, or the Public Works Department, acquire and maintain chippers that could be used by the public. There's a lot of slash on rural properties, even in town, people have limbs come down or whatever. I know the Cal Fire has a program where you can request a chipper to come by, but sometimes it takes four or five months before they can show up, so I just thought if there were more units available, it would be a good idea, so.
Thank you very much. We do participate in the county program, and I do know, based on, from last year to this year, that the county with Cal Fire acquired some more assets and more chippers, and I think that wait period has come down considerably, but is something we'll take into note.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Dave Ross. Dave, welcome back.
Thank you. David Ross, Rancho Calistoga. First of all, I want to thank everybody on the dais. It was not a pretty PSPS, but every one of you dug in, collectively you did a great job. We have much work to do, there's no getting around it, but I, for one, am grateful for all that you have done, and I hope everybody in the room appreciates it as well. Second agenda item, as I said, I live in Rancho, and the easiest way for me to get here is on my bike, using the Cyrus Creek pathway. There are two blind corners on the Cyrus Creek pathway. It's very nicely lit, there's a lot of people who use it who just kind of seem to think that they can go anywhere they want with it, and it would be really handy, Public Works City Manager, I'm not sure who in the City of Calistoga would be responsible, paint a line down the middle of it, and we already own the decals for bikes, pedestrians, put them down. Have you ever heard of Critical Mass?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm used to riding Critical Mass, I've been chased down by cabs. I don't want to be chased down by somebody on a bike that's mad because I didn't hear him come and ding them. Lights first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's a good solution, a good suggestion, and I think a simple one to solve for, having almost been taken out on that corner myself. I don't have any more speaker cards under public or oral communication, there's anyone else interested in addressing the council on a non-agendized item. Share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, but you're not required to do so.
Okay. My name is Tom Meyer, I live on Lake Street in Calistoga. This past weekend, the Press Democrat out of Santa Rosa wrote a very interesting article talking about the lessons learned from the 2017 fire, and how they had been put into effect to significantly help in the 2019 event. In the spirit of lessons learned, I have an observation, and then I have a recommendation as pertains to Calistoga itself. On Sunday, October 27th, Calistoga issued via NICSIL an alert that said that there are high winds. It also said in the same message that there are no evacuation orders associated with Calistoga at that time, at 7:12 AM. Around 10:15 that morning, within minutes, on public radio out of a station from Santa Rosa, and on television, I believe it was Channel 7 out of San Francisco, my wife and I heard that Calistoga was under mandatory evacuation. There was no ambiguity, it was clear. We had not received a NICSIL message, so we became suspicious. We consider NICSIL appropriately or not to be the authority. I also, at that time, received a message from a well-intended friend in the Santa Rosa area who claiming connections with Cal Fire said, "You're about to be evacuated, pack your bags." I told them that we had not received anything from the city. We decided to wait. We waited about 20 minutes, and then I called the Calistoga Police Department. The individual answered the phone, stated with absolute clarity, no ambiguity, "No, we are not under mandatory evacuation. The agencies that make that decision have not notified us as such, and we are not under evacuation. If and when they do call us, we will issue a NICSIL alert." Clear. I got off the phone, said to my wife, "Leave the bags here, we're not putting them in the car, we were already packed." Around 11 o'clock or so, Next Door Calistoga started lighting up like a Christmas tree. "What's going on? I hear messages of evacuations, I'm petrified, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Still nothing had come out. At 12:48, almost on top of each other, NICSIL alerts came out from Napa County and from the city of Calistoga stating that there was an advisory alert for the city of Calistoga. I know, because I know several people, and I've heard, that because of that erroneous message that came out from the talking heads on television and those on radio, that a lot of people panicked and left the city. They just got up and left. Friends of ours left, saying, "We don't know what's going on, we want to get out, we don't want to leave in the middle of the night, we're taking off." I don't know how many left, but I'm going to guess it was dozens. That's the observation. So my recommendation is, when I called the police department, I finished that call with confidence, because the person I spoke to stated her message with absolute clarity. I'm sure that the city has a protocol in place between Sheriff's Department and/or Cal Fire for how the process works. So my recommendation to the council is, put it down on a piece of paper in simple, easy-to-understand language, and put that document in a mailing to all citizens. Put it in the water bill, by the way, my notes are written on the back of this, which came out of the water bill recently. Bravo, good job. Put it in the water bill, or throw a bone to the Tribune and take out a full-page ad, and simply tell the citizens of Calistoga what the protocol is, and who you turn to, and who you trust for accuracy. It should not be television, it should not be radio, it should not be hearsay on social media, it should be absolute clarity from those in charge in this city. And I trust that you have that capability, and I challenge you to do that.
Thank you very much.
I thank you for your time and observations.
So that was the process and protocol coming out of 2017, and obviously there have been a couple of years since then, so some folks may have forgotten, and we will be happy to remind. But you are absolutely correct, the be-all, end-all notification process for city residents is NICSIL. Unfortunately, some folks like to get ahead of themselves, in this case KSRO Radio, the news station you recommended. When that does happen, we do, via the county Office of Emergency Services, contact those outlets immediately to make corrections. Some of them are better at those corrections than others. And then there's, if there was any way that could be suggested on how to correct or fix our social media situation nationally and in Calistoga, I would strongly suggest you share that with us, and you should never use Next Door as your source of information to begin with. But NICSIL is absolutely from the county and from the city, the be-all and end-all. And if any doubt is out there, you did the right thing, and it was to contact the police department, just as a form of information. The NICSILs are actually generated from the position where the dispatcher is, who answered the phone, so they have probably the best information at that particular moment in time. In terms of advisories, evacuation, mandatory warnings, et cetera, that we have to wait for that order to be initiated by Cal Fire, and that comes from Cal Fire to us, and that's when we make that NICSIL alert notified. And just as a reminder from 2017, we, as a city, as a municipality, do not make the decision on whether there is an evacuation, whether it's an advisory, a warning, or a mandatory, that is a Cal Fire situation. So, sorry if there was any confusion, but listen to this fine neighbor of yours, NICSIL is the authority, and I think we will do something to remind people how that process works. So thank you very much, very useful. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Brian Fennin, Calistoga. I'd just like to confirm exactly, that same scenario happened to us, and a heads-up on that, county OES was not operating, their NICSIL was not operating that weekend. So, prior to that, we had gotten notice from the county and from the city, that's pretty good, but for particular, that Saturday, Sunday, county OES was not online. So, might want to check into that if you could, too.
County OES?
County OES was not sending out NICSILs for about 36 hours that weekend. There was a gap. So, once again, my wife called the city, got the same thing, you know, talked to someone and said, "No, there is no evacuation at this time."
Well, the county was issuing NICSILs on that Sunday, because we were sharing NICSIL information.
Well, maybe it was sent even on Saturday, I think it was Saturday that this happened.
All right. We'll have to check that, because our NICSILs, we coordinated.
Yeah, there was a gap in the county.
But you were getting ours.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? All right, with that said, I will close oral communication. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. City Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez-Ortega?
Well, I just want to express my gratitude to all the city staff, city manager, fire, and police departments, Mayor Canning, and the rest of my college council members, for all the work you did during the emergency, and especially to be sure that our residents in Calistoga were safe. And also, I want to say thank you to the community in general, because everybody was taking care of each other. It's really bad for our neighbors that all the losses that they, that happened to them, but if any way you can reach out to them and help as much as possible, I think they will appreciate. Even a car with our sympathy will be good for them. And, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams?
I just want to confirm that there's a meeting regarding Grant Street in a week, I believe that's the 13th.
It's next Wednesday, 6 o'clock.
And so for those who are interested, to be sure to attend, the city really is interested in the input and the comments of the neighbors around Grant Street and that eventual paving of the road and so on. So that's the 13th of November in a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I believe City Manager Kern is going to talk about, give kind of a little brief rundown on the city activity over the past week with relationship to the PSPS and the standby mode that we were in for the fire. We did have, very fortunate that we got 30 fire agents from, not just California, but there were also five in here from Oregon to help protect the city. And I would like to reach out to Iris and a group she's associated with, I don't remember the name exactly.
They're called Casa de la Cultura.
And Iris made a phone call, and the next thing you know, the fairgrounds got opened up, and I talked to one of the strike team leaders from over there, and he's the best carnitas he's ever had. So, any future fires, they're on the list to get up here real quick. So, that was some outstanding work that happens in a small community like Calistoga. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, for those people that were inconvenienced, I think that's probably a mild word, for many days by the power shutdown, the city is not unsympathetic to your plight in the future. I know that we have had some conversations with PG&E about how to reroute some wire, some transmission lines, if that's the proper term to use, to try to get power through the back door over to at least the population of Rancho de Calistoga, if not also other areas that are impacted. So, we're not ignoring your needs, we're working on them, perhaps not getting enough publicity for what it is we have done, but we don't want any second-class citizens in the city, those that have electric power and those that don't. So, if we can, we will see to it that attention gets applied there. On the Grant Street public forum, and the first one that was there was Chris and myself, and, okay, I'm on the hot seat again, all right, that's all I need to know.
Just from a consistency sake.
For consistency sake, just standpoint.
Are three minutes up? Are three minutes up? Good. There you go.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Yeah, I too would like to thank the city staff, they all did a great job, and City Manager Mike Kern, I know you put in a lot of hours, appreciate it.
Thank you. I as well want to echo kudos to the staff, Public Works, PD, Fire Department, the visiting police departments, the visiting fire departments, residents as a whole, neighbors helping neighbors. We certainly appreciate the patience of those of us that live on the impacted side of the river. This is something we are working diligently with PG&E on, quite candidly, it's just how the town is wired, and we can't send power to the other side of the river, because it then sends it into the hillsides, which is why we have a PSPS to begin with. That decision is with PG&E, that we are working very closely with. One of the presentations we're going to hear tonight calls that into question, it is not the solution by any stretch of the imagination. The generator system has nothing to do with, the generators are big enough to power the entire city, the CPUC and Cal Fire will not allow us to carry that electricity over the river because of the circuitry issue. We are in a very fortunate situation, we have a temporary generator system that got us through these last three PSPSs, which will be converted to a permanent generator situation for future PSPSs. For those of us that were inconvenienced, of the 800,000 other PG&E customers, which equated to 2.5 million people, we are the only municipality in the Bay Area that has this system. We are a test. So even though those of us that live on the other side of the river are inconvenienced, we have the ability to make a simple jaunt across to get services that other communities went days and days without. So please appreciate and understand that, and a lot of work, a year's worth of work went into getting us into that position, and we're continuing to be aggressive, assertive, progressive, to find other solutions for the rest of the city, and we will continue to do so. To the neighbors that live closest to those generators, I appreciate, I understand the impact this has, they are louder than you would like them to be, they emit things you don't want them to, but for the benefit of the entire community, yourselves included, we thank you for that inconvenience there as well. Calistoga Businesses did a great job helping out as well, they were very flexible. And then some dialogue that was going on throughout the week regarding, you know, if you're in town and you had power or didn't have power, a phrase I would like us to stop using, when people said, wanted to find out whether or not you had power, is, "Do you live on the right side of the river or the wrong side of the river?" I just want to be clear, we just live on the other side of the river. There's no right or wrong side of the river. Right, Lana?
It's the dark side.
It's the dark, it is literally the dark side. And your mayor lives on the dark side of the river as well, so.
And your vice mayor.
And the vice mayor, so. But with that said, a huge kudos. Unfortunately, as has been shared with us, kind of a compliment, that we're getting better at this every time it happens. I have no interest or desire in becoming perfect at this, because that would mean we'd have to have several more of these along the way. But what we do know is that we are in for a good decade of this PSPS situation, so we all have to get better at it, and we are going to continue to be a very progressive and aggressive city about how to solve our situation, because we are a bit of an island, we are in a unique situation because of where our transmission comes from and what we are surrounded by. So with that said, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. So, again, I want to reiterate, next Wednesday's meeting on the Grant Street Reconstruction Project, starting at 6 here, going till 7:30, plus or minus. We did hand-deliver notices to the residents this afternoon. It is on our website, providing notification, and we also have it rotating on Channel 26, or 28. So we will be reaching out to the newspaper, and hopefully they will do a PSA with us for that. You've already talked about the PSPS, I'll go into a little more detail on item number nine about some specific metrics. I do want to give a big thanks to City Clerk Irene. Tonight is her last meeting with us, and she's accepted a position over in Sonoma County, not with the county, but in Sonoma County. So I just want to acknowledge the remarkable job she's done for the past year for the department and for the community, and I just wish her many successes in her endeavors going forward.
Thank you, Irene.
Thanks, Irene.
If I may, I just do want to say that, you know, you are an amazing community, look at you all here being involved, and that's really what, you know, a city clerk, and especially the city council, ask for. Again, same thing, same message for the city council, it has truly been a pleasure, so thank you, and I hope to see you again.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion on this evening's consent calendar as presented unless anyone would like an item pulled.
I'd like to pull number 3, 5, and 6, please.
3, 5, and 6. All right, I'll entertain a motion to move on all other items excluding 3, 5, and 6.
I'll move 1, 2, and 4.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item number 3, resolution authorizing staff to file a SB2 Planning Grants Program application and execute necessary documents and agreements. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. Councilmember Williams, your questions?
Yes, so I just would like to ask a few questions about ADUs. I'm going to be in favor of this motion, and, yes, thank you. So, an ADU, a grant unit colloquially, is a unit less than 750 square feet, I think, and it can be carved out of an existing residence, or it could be an addition, I think, to an existing residence, or it could be a separate structure altogether? Am I so far okay?
All of those are true as of this moment, but.
Director Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Planning and building Director Lynn Goldberg, thank you, Mayor. Speaking to the Mayor. Yes, at this point in time, those are all true, however, there are some, there's some legislation that was just signed and will become effective in January that we'll be addressing.
If on, I just have a couple of questions. If on a lot there are two residences, could each of them develop an ADU, or is only one per lot permitted?
No, it's not one per lot, and it would depend on what the zoning is, but actually under the new legislation, ADUs will be allowed in multifamily zones.
Thank you. And then, can the ADUs be used as, can they be rented out in the short term if they're following, you know, city laws? Can they be used in the Airbnb situation?
No dwelling unit in the city can be rented on a short-term basis.
Great. And then I'd notice on the resolution itself, there's a discussion, the staff discussion talks about allocating the money towards ADU, the office for the, for Sonoma-Napa ADU, but in the resolution itself, I think there's no reference to that specific use of ADUs. It's said it's going to be used according to standard agreements and so on, but there's no reference, I think, like there is in the staff reports, which would, says, which I agree with, that the emphasis would be incentivizing ADUs and their use as rentals in order to increase the supply of affordable housing. So I'm fine with that in the staff report, but in the resolution itself, there's no statement directing that the money be used in the way that the staff report is describing it.
Yes, unfortunately, this is a Tumblr that we're required to use by the grant program, and they don't like you to deviate in any way, shape, or form, except putting the names in. So, we're actually not allowed to elaborate, but the, I've done the application already, and it will reflect the four tasks that are shown in your staff report.
That are shown in the staff report?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone in the public with a question or comment on this specific to the planning grant application? All right, closed public comment. I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number 5, resolution approving a cash-in-lieu policy. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution.
So I just have a couple of questions on the language. I'm on page 57 of 120. Let's see, I guess, Mr. Kern, you can address this.
Yes.
I'm at the bottom, I have a question, I just don't understand the language here. I'm at the bottom of the first big paragraph, there's number 1 and number 2 down there, and the last sentence reads, "The city's program contains two key limitations to, on the option to cash out leave. Number 1, the employee must make an irrevocable election to cash out leave on the calendar year preceding the year in which the leave is cashed out. And 2, which I don't understand the language I'm going to read, only leave accrued during the year in which leave is cashed out may be cashed out." Can you help me with that?
Sure. So my current city manager, this policy is cleanup language that we're obligated to do under the IRS codes. What we've been doing in the past has not been strictly in conformance with that. What we've been doing in the past has not been strictly in conformance with that. So the first item is that the employee must make an irrevocable offer or affirmative, "I want to cash out this much." They have to make that signed statement prior to December 31st of the year before they wish to cash out. So it's constructive notice that not this calendar year, but next calendar year, I'm going to cash out some vacation balances. So they have to declare how much they're going to cash out. And the reason for that is that at that point, then that becomes a taxable commodity that the IRS wants their money for. The second part is that only the vacation leave that they earn in that calendar year that they're cashing out can actually be cashed out. They can't do a reach back and take balances from their bucket, if you will, and cash that out. So, for example, an employee might get 10 hours of vacation a month. And if they declare 80 hours of cash out, they have to wait for those for eight months before they can cash that out. So it's, you declare, and you only can cash out what you, what you actually have accrued.
Thank you.
If you use some of that accrual during that calendar year, you're not eligible to cash that out. So it's an up to, but not to exceed.
Thank you. And my second question is on page 59 of 120, and that is the first whereas of the resolution itself. And I'm just not getting the language here. Whereas eligible employees may exchange accrued vacation for the equivalent cash compensation under some memorandum of agreements with employee unions and other unrepresented employee, give some employees the option. The language is a little bit mangled there.
Okay. So it's, basically, there's a, there's a finite group that this applies to. So it's unrepresented employees, it's certain members in the public safety sectors, either spelled out in a memorandum of understanding or a specific agreement with that individual. So like a department head has a specific agreement that has the allowance for cashing out vacation balances. If there's some issue with the language under, under certain memorandums of agreement with employee unions and other unrepresented employees, which give some employees the option to. If that helps qualify that, we can, we can make that language modification.
It's not clear the way it's written.
Yeah. So, you know, with, if, if there's a little bit of wordsmithing, we can, we can make that happen to clarify and qualify what the intent of the resolution is.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's my only question on that item.
Thank you. Anyone in the public, any questions or comments on this item? Closed public comment. Entertain a motion as, on item number 5.
So moved.
Circle.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by Vice Mayor, Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Item number 6, resolution authorizing amendment number 3 to consultant services agreement with John Draper, P.E., in the amount not to exceed $126,680 for capital improvement, project development, and project management. The recommended action is to consider adopting the resolution. Derek, unless, well, actually, do you have specific questions, or do you want a staff report first?
I do have, no, I do have one specific question.
Sure.
I'm, I'm fine with the entire resolution and the staff report. And I have one concern. There's a, an enumeration of projects which would, which the consultant may assist the department on, I think, and they're enumerated here, and there's a long list. And I just want to be sure that because they are enumerated, all these various projects, and I'm looking at Grand Street in particular, that because they're enumerated as candidates for assistance from the, from the consultant, that, that it not be implied that this agreement means that these projects are all going to proceed? For example, in Grand Street, there's a discussion coming up in a meeting, and who knows where that discussion will go? The public, you know, may, may help the council decide to do something different than the plans are originally, or nothing at all, for that matter. So I don't want the resolution to infer that these are all approved as described, and they're not necessarily going to be worked on just because they're listed here in this resolution. Can we understand that?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Yes, to kind of clarify that, we, we give a-
Derek, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Derek, Acting Director with Public Works. Apologize for that. We gave kind of a broad list and, for John's services. And this long list does not necessarily mean that these projects, you know, you're giving your authorization for us to proceed with those projects. We will be coming back, especially, you know, as an example, on Grand Street. You know, we'll obviously have the community forum next, next week. And then we would be coming back to council. You know, we wouldn't be proceeding with bidding a project that the community is not behind.
Thank you. That's my only question. I just didn't want the resolution to imply our ascent towards every project just because it was listed. In that case, I'll move that we approve this item number 6.
Okay, for anyone in the public, any questions on this item? All right. I'll entertain a motion as presented. We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, we have a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Item number 7, presentation, this is under Proclamations, Presentations, and Awards. We have a presentation from the Clean Coalition regarding the Community Microgrid Feasibility Study. We will be receiving the presentation, City Manager Kern.
So I'll just briefly go over, if your council will recall, Clean Coalition gave a presentation to your council back in January. We entered into a professional services agreement for them to undertake Phase 1 of potentially a three-phase project. What they've done is basically assessed the community, looked at opportunities and constraints for possible microgrid development, come up with some rough estimates on cost, and then looked at other alternatives for power generation. So they've looked at multiple ways to generate power, solar, battery backup. They did a little bit of evaluation on fuel cell technology and also geothermal potential for small turbine generation. Your council, at the end of the presentation, were seeking some form of direction as to whether or not you would like to have us bring back Phase 2 and/or Phase 3. The current phase expenditure is $26,000 and has been budgeted. Phase 2 and 3 have not been budgeted and are respectively $30,000 and $14,000. So if you choose to move forward and give us direction to bring back additional phases, we would agendize that as a separate item, which would necessarily require a budget adjustment. So with that, I'd like to invite the folks from Clean Coalition to come up and give their presentation. Hopefully, it will be brief, and then we'll have a section for, or a session for questions and answers. So with that, would you guys like to please come up? Introduce yourself, and let's get this underway.
Welcome back, thank you. By brief, he means succinct but informative. Mr. Harkin, can you assist us with at least one pack of lighting so people can see the screen? Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished city councilmembers. I'm Frank Wasco, Managing Director with the Clean Coalition. With me this evening is Malini Condon, our Senior Engineer, and Monica Maher, our Project We're here to present our findings on the feasibility assessment we performed for a community microgrid in Calistoga. As far as tonight's agenda, we'll start by reviewing microgrid basics, the scope of the project, and the steps we took. Then we'll cover the results, including the high-level design, the economics, and the finance options. And we'll wrap up with next steps. I think everyone knows who we are, but just a quick background, we have offices in Menlo Park, Santa Barbara, and Denver. We've got a wealth of experience in renewable energy policy, microgrid planning and engineering. We've got an extensive portfolio. We've worked with various Fortune 500 companies, Stanford University, many of the UCs, and multinational-dependent power producers. We've also worked on two California Energy Commission grants and one Department of Energy grant, along with a contract with the National Energy, the National Renewable Energy Lab. We've got very close ties with PG&E. We've got a couple of grants right now we're working with them on, as well as other municipal Just real quickly, our mission is to accelerate the transition to renewable energy in a modern grid through technical policy and project development expertise. And our goal, of course, is to achieve a 100% renewable energy future, with 25% of those renewables coming from local distributed energy resources. I'm trying to be quick here. I want to give time for the Malini and Monica to go through the really important things. Utility grid, microgrids, today, the majority of our energy is produced by remote power plants. The energy is sent over the transmission distribution grids to serve homes and businesses. During a PSPS event, PG&E shuts down parts of the transmission distribution grid to prevent wildfires from starting, leaving homes and businesses without power. This affects both PG&E customers and MCECCA customers. The microgrids being proposed as part of the solution will augment power generation at specific critical facility sites, all behind the meter. This near-term solution will keep critical sites to the community operating during PSPS As you're all aware, there's been tremendous amount of media attention, given at the mainstream and the national level, journalists, microgrid developers, and other municipal leaders are interested in seeing if it's feasible for a city like yourself to deploy a microgrid as a renewable energy solution to the PSPS events, and are hoping for a showcase project in Calistoga. Recently, the last week or so, we had been contacted by the New York Times and the Washington Post for interviews and updates on your, on your special project. With that, I know I raced through this, but I want to give time for the real part of the presentation. So now I'll turn it over to Monica.
Thanks, Frank. All right. So for this project, we did four different phases, which I'll go into more detail. The first was the solar siting survey, and then we talked to different stakeholders for the site selection. We did a technical and economic analysis, and then the final presentation, which you guys are hearing tonight. For the solar siting survey, the process for this was to look at Google Earth and look for buildings or parking lots, so existing built environment, that had space for photovoltaic solar. Based on the available space, we could size out how much electricity could be generated from these systems. And through that calculation, it was determined that the city of Calistoga has space for over 25 megawatts of solar panels. The next step was to talk with different city council members, various business owners and facilities managers about, at this point, it was the, the impacts from the previous PSPS from the previous year, as well as going through some of the different sites and talking about the benefit that there'd be to the community if those sites were to stay energized during a PSPS. This is just a visualization of some of the topics that came up frequently when talking to the different stakeholders. What we did is, is we created a matrix of the input from the stakeholders, cross-referenced with where their solar potential and the community benefit to come up with the site As City Manager Kern mentioned, we did analyze a few different technologies. Historically, Clean Coalition does recommend solar and storage, but we also wanted to look at fuel cells as well as geothermal, especially given Calistoga's unique position. The three criteria we were looking at for this was a proven technology. We were directed to come, to come up with a present, with a proposal that could be implemented tomorrow. So a technology that has been deployed multiple times and successfully. Also, to align with both the state and city goals, we're looking for something with a low-carbon footprint, as well as something that has a fuel source reliability. So if the power were to be out for a week or even a month, it could still continue to generate, and these sites could still stay energized. And with that, solar and storage fits all three of those criteria. We heard earlier about the resilience zone with PG&E and the pre-installed interconnection hub, and some of the noise and complaints about the, the seven megawatts of generators that are being used for those. So we did do a quick analysis on the ability to use solar and storage. And it was determined that we could install enough solar and storage to remove the need of five megawatts of those seven megawatts of, of generation. That said, the timeline for this is much longer than doing the community microgrid, so this is something that would be explored in further phases. And we do want to stay focused on the short-term solution of, of the microgrids for these specific With this schematic, I just want to kind of remind folks that we are looking at the critical loads for these different sites. And so what is outlined in the dash portion is, in the event of one of these PSPSs or without power, the, the critical loads would stay energized through the solar and the energy storage. It's possible that some of the sites would have to have non-critical loads shed during one of these events. But it's also worth noting from the schematic that the solar and energy storage are grid-connected, so they would provide benefits if it was not during a PSPS event. So based on our analysis, these are the six sites that we recommend. You'll notice that most of the sites, we are able to meet 100% of their annual load through solar and storage. CalMart is the, is the one site that is unable to meet that. You'll also notice for the fairgrounds, it exceeds the 100%. And the reason for that is that in, when the fairgrounds is used as an emergency shelter, we anticipate that the energy consumption would be different than daily operation. So that would be something we explore more in Phase 2. You know, we heard tonight that it, it was used recently in that capacity, so we have some data that, that we could use to extrapolate that. The two schools would also be good locations for emergency shelters if needed, whereas CalMart, the fire station, and the wastewater treatment plant provide critical functions for the city that, if they can stay energized during a power outage, it's beneficial to the community. As I mentioned earlier, these would be grid-tied systems, so you do get financial benefit from both the solar and the storage when it is grid-tied. So you can see from, from this that the red indicates savings that you get typically from the solar, from reducing the energy use, whereas the blue tends to be more for the storage and savings you get from reducing your demand and doing demand response and load shifting. And Malini will talk about that a bit more with the financials. I do have this on metrics. This is largely for you guys to reference for the next slide when we, when we look at this, but just a few things to note here. Energy production, both from the solar as well as energy consumption, you're going to see that in kilowatt-hours. That's, you know, power over time. The solar system size is going to be in kilowatts DC, that's the wattage of the actual panels. And then you will see, too, the production from the panels in kilowatt-hours. And energy storage has two values. It has both kilowatts and kilowatt-hours. Kilowatts is the amount of power that the battery can provide at any one time, whereas kilowatt-hours is the amount of storage that that battery, the amount of energy that battery can, can store. So you'll see that broken down here for the six different sites. You can see their current total energy use, as well as recommended new solar to be installed, what that new solar will generate, and then the necessary battery sizes for, for those So if we look at all six of these sites together in one portfolio, you can see it's about 2.3 megawatts of annual generation. We estimate that these sites currently spend about half a million dollars in electricity, and through savings from the solar and storage, you know, they would be saving about $350,000 a year. The payback period of these sites is anywhere from eight and a half to 25 years. And this is dependent on assuming that, that power converter and the battery would need to be replaced every 10 years.
So there are a few options for paying for this type of project. Today, 90% of commercial PV systems are financed through power purchases- Today, 90% of commercial PV systems are financed through power purchase agreements, which is the method forward that we'd recommend for this project. PPAs typically must take contract, and whoever it's contracted to must purchase all of the energy. There are a couple of other options. An energy services agreement might be applicable to some of the sites that we've discussed today. This is similar to a PPA, but accounts for other energy technologies such as energy efficiency measures or energy storage. Finally, it is an option to do a direct purchase of this type of project, however, large capital costs make this option difficult for most customers. For the projects we've outlined here, the total cost is roughly $10 million. However, it's important to understand that the site owners are quite dispersed, there are some that are owned by the schools, school district, others are privately-owned sites, and others are municipal sites. This slide just covers a little bit more detail on the structure of a power purchase agreement. There's typically three parties, the host site, the developer, and the utility. The host site, which would be any one of the sites that we've discussed today, receives energy from the onsite PV system, and also benefits from the energy savings as well as demand charge savings provided by the solar and battery. And finally, the host benefits from predictable electricity costs over the term of the PPA, which is typically five to 25 years. The second party is the developer, who coordinates financing, design, and construction of the project. The key role and benefit that they provide is that they process all of the incentives, including tax benefits, allowing municipal or other public facilities to benefit from the tax credits even though they're not taxable entities. The developer also typically performs or arranges for monitoring and performance, as well as operations and maintenance of the system. Finally, the utility continues to provide regular electric service and also provides the net energy metering credit to the host. The plot here at the bottom shows the electricity bill a customer might see prior to the ESA or PPA. During the ESA, the energy bill paid to the utility is reduced, however, there are also monthly payments that are paid to the developer or PPA provider. And then after a certain period of time, which we define as the payback period, the site owner typically receives those savings, and so the overall energy bill is reduced. There are also quite a few incentives available today for solar and energy storage systems as well as microgrids. The top four listed here are pretty typical for renewable energy microgrids deployed in California. They cover the federal investment tax credit, which is currently at 30%, but will be stepping down to 26% next year. There's also the MACR's accelerated or bonus depreciation, which is another tax incentive provided by the federal government. The self-generation incentive program is available in California for energy storage, and MCE offers a net energy metering credit beyond what PG&E offers by one cent per kilowatt-hour. There's also quite a few bond incentives that are potentially applicable to this project, should the city choose to pursue a direct purchase option. However, that's not our recommended pathway forward. So we've just completed Phase One, which is the feasibility assessment, and we're proposing to move forward with Phase Two, planning and engineering. The main value adds of pursuing Phase Two are to do a more detailed assessment of the critical loads at each of these sites, in particular, the fairgrounds, which we need to do a little bit more analysis to get an understanding of what the critical loads would look like during a PSPS event or during another emergency event. We'll also be doing onsite evaluations to do a workup of the current electrical design at each of the sites, and do estimates of what would be required for upgrading the design to account for a solar and storage microgrid. And finally, we'll investigate energy efficiency measures of the selected sites to bring down the overall energy load and produce a conceptual and functional design. Phase Three would be to bid and move forward with project completion. We'd need to engage a design firm to design the microgrid. That covers our presentation for this evening. I want to thank you all for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We'll start with council members' questions.
I was wondering, did you make any contact with any of the mobile home parks? Because those are all master electric metered, I believe, and then the mobile home park parcels out the cost to the various spaces. So, and what kind of a reception did you get there?
We actually had really a lot of interest from the mobile home parks, however, after investigating the feasibility of installing solar onto the rooftops of mobile homes, the results were mixed in terms of the structural integrity of the building to be able to handle the weight of solar and be able to operate continuously for 25 years.
What about a fuel cell?
So we did evaluate fuel cells at a relatively high level. The main concern with moving forward with fuel cells is, we live in an earthquake-prone region, and there are multiple studies that show that in the event of an earthquake, gas infrastructure is expected to be out for roughly 10 times longer than electric infrastructure, and for that reason, we didn't investigate the potential of a fuel cell further.
Okay, and with respect to geothermal, what kind of thoughts did you have on that?
I'll pass this one off to Monica.
So the geothermal we're looking at for the scope of this project is the small scale, the 1-megawatt, because obviously now, just north of here, the geyser shows that it's very feasible on the large scale. Those smaller 1-megawatt generators have only been installed a couple of times, so it's just not a proven technology, and one of them was successful, one of them less so. So just thinking about something that is easy to permit and can move through the process and has this kind of proven steps in place.
Okay, and then with respect to energy storage, was there any thought given to having energies stored that doesn't necessarily come from solar? In other words, you store the energy at night when the cost of receiving the energy is low, and then you have that in a bank, and you can, you know, bleed it off as necessary during peak times, and probably have to have it so that you have a baseline in there that you don't go below a certain point, so that if you do have a power outage, you have a certain length of time that you can work off the batteries. So did you give any consideration to charging the batteries off the, I'll call it the commercial grid?
Yeah, so we did give some consideration to that. The way that the, there's kind of a balance to be had between the incentives offered by both the investment tax credit and the self-generation incentive program. In order to obtain those benefits, you need to charge your battery with a renewable energy resource, here solar, at least 75% of the time. And so that becomes kind of an operational question, how you plan to operate the battery over the course of 10 years. That being said, the issue we saw with just having a battery without pairing it with a solar resource was that, since we're designing these microgrids in the context of PSPS, we're really expecting these outages to last multiple days. And right now, right now, the cost of a battery is just too high to size one to last multiple days. That type of system could work, but you would likely only be able to economically achieve one to four hours of backup power via battery alone, which is why pairing it with solar is a key piece of the solution.
And I know that the federal tax credit is going to be going down 4% here, starting January 1st. Are you aware of any communities that are making some kind of incentive to, similar to the federal tax credit? You know, obviously, we can't afford to give $20,000 worth of credit to everybody, but is there some way that the city can incentivize the installation of microgrids that are solar installations at their home that you've looked into?
So we didn't look at anything related to that in the context of this project, but through other work that the Clean Coalition has done, we're aware of programs being offered by MCE to help homeowners retrofit or improve their energy system at home. So I'd be happy to follow up with you with additional information on that.
Those of you that know, I just installed photovoltaic at my house, so I'm not looking for a subsidy from the city. I'm just, you know, moving forward, you know, I'd like to see what we can do to help those things along, whether it be building permit streamlining, although I think it was pretty easy to get the building permits, but along that line. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council members? Councilmember Williams?
Yes, please. So when we say "microgrid," in this context, is that synonymous with a solar system? Is that basically what we mean by "microgrid" now here?
Not quite. So a solar system on its own installed today would be grid-connected, and so the main value add that that would have is providing energy bill savings. However, for a microgrid, you typically need to, if you would like to power your critical loads during any time of day, you need to have some form of storage, which is where the battery storage piece of it comes in.
And by critical loads, do you have a specific meaning for that term?
Mainly, the critical load for each facility needs to be determined by whoever is operating or owns that facility. In the context of this project, critical loads would include lighting, anything that stores food or supports food preparation. In this analysis that we've done for the feasibility assessment, we assume that 25% of a building's loads are critical. Some examples of non-critical loads would be heating and cooling. Typically, most residents or building occupants can tolerate quite a wide range of inside temperatures, it doesn't always have to be set to 68.5. So that gives an example of some types of critical loads, but for example, a wastewater treatment plant would have significantly different loads that I couldn't speak to at this moment.
So supposing the city implemented a plan like we're contemplating here, and then a PSPS occurs, as we had here, and PG&E shuts off the power for three or four days, say. How, what we, you know, what we did now, you heard earlier, was rely on the generator and that powered part of the town, and there are disadvantages there. How would it be different if we purchased the program that you're contemplating, that you're offering here? How would that be different for us in that case?
So the main difference is that this would be able to power facilities on, I guess, both sides of the river. I appreciate the distinction that was made earlier today on that. So with the site selection that we presented today, we specifically targeted areas that would be outside of PG&E's resilience zone. However, I understand that that is in the planning process and the parameters on that are changing. So these microgrids could be installed really anywhere, and you wouldn't be constrained by PG&E's distribution grid and the CPUC fire threat zones. So that's one additional value add for these microgrid systems. And the second is that ideally, these PSPS events won't last more than a few days. However, the reality is that outages could potentially last much longer than that, and there could be events that isolate Calistoga from other places. And so where that kind of affects the design decision is, it's not certain that we're able to import diesel fuel on a long-term basis. So I'm not certain what the fuel storage situation is right now. However, in a longer-term outage, potentially in a scenario where there's a wildfire that causes a mudslide, or for whatever reason blocks off road access to this area, not being able to replenish diesel fuel is certainly a challenge, and that's where a solar and storage microgrid can come in and provide backup power to those critical facilities.
So, thank you. And so you've identified various sites in the solar siting survey, and so if those sites have a microgrid, does that microgrid benefit beyond the site itself? It's not clear to me. If it's on the fairground, say, does it benefit any part of the town besides the fairground, or if it's on CalMart, or if it's on the police station? Are other areas benefited? So what about the neighbors, the residences, and so on? Are they benefiting by a microgrid system, or is it just the locales, the sites that have the microgrid on them?
For now, it's just the sites that have the microgrid on them. We would legally only be able to serve loads that are onsite, and that's due to the way our energy regulations are written today. However, that's why during the site selection process, we chose facilities that the community at large could benefit from. We see that there's a lot of benefit if folks are able to continue to get their groceries, if they're able to have their wastewater treated in a timely manner. Those are all community benefits.
Okay, so just so I understand, so this is not necessarily going to power the whole town, this kind of project will power selected sites?
Correct. In the short term, this project would serve just the selected sites. In the longer term, another advantage to solar and storage is that it is possible in the medium to long term to coordinate these sites and create a larger microgrid, but that's out of the scope of this project for right now.
And then are there municipalities, are there cities that you have worked with? You've visited various clients of yours, are there cities that you've worked with that have enacted this kind of project, and how's that going?
So our first project is under construction in San Francisco's Mission District. It's currently not operational, but we're going through the, or we've secured our interconnection with PG&E, and we're supposed to break ground any day now.
Yeah, so that's a big neighborhood, so will you have, will you be on selected sites in this case, in the Mission?
Correct.
Will you be on selected sites, and that'll power certain buildings?
Yeah, this project will be powering five buildings that are all multifamily apartment buildings in kind of a one-city-block area.
And I know you described it, but forgive me for asking again, the difference between a microgrid and a solar system that you seem to be talking about?
So the main difference, I think, is in how much functionality and control you have. So some folks say that like a diesel generator attached to a building with an automatic transfer switch is a microgrid, and it kind of is, but what we're offering with these microgrids is load shedding functionality, so being able to remotely control which electric loads are served by the backup system and which ones are not, thereby kind of preserving your battery capacity for the critical loads that need the power the most. And also, a somewhat advanced control system that allows you to do that load shedding and monitors the status of the battery and the solar system. So a solar system on its own would not be able to operate during a grid outage or power outage, but a microgrid with solar and storage can.
And I, one last question. Could you go to the chart that is an example using CalMart? That's on, there we go. Could you explain that for me?
Yeah, definitely. So what we have here, we have two kind of pie charts. The one on the left, titled baseline, basically shows CalMart, the customers, breakdown of their energy breakdown of their energy bill by their energy charge and their demand charge. So, demand charge is something that shows up on bills for commercial customers. Currently, residential customers don't have demand charges on their bill. But a demand charge is charged based on your highest energy use for that billing period. So, let's say it's a really hot day, and CalMart's refrigeration systems are running at full peak. And for, you know, five hours on a hot summer day, they're using, I don't know, 200 kilowatts of power. Then they're charged a demand charge based on that 200 kilowatts of power. And then, the orange piece of it is the energy. So, the chart on the right shows the difference in the electric bill after installing solar and storage. So, the energy bill is reduced from that original 64.8% on the original bill to 21.2%. And so, that's from the solar PV. You're basically reducing the energy consumption. And then, the blue piece of the chart, instead of having 35% of the original bill going towards demand charge, you have only 16% of the original bill going towards the demand charge. And those savings are coming primarily from the energy storage. So, you could imagine a load profile, so the energy use of CalMart throughout the day might have some type of peak in the afternoon when it's hot and sunny. And so, what a battery does is it comes in and it shaves that peak, and thereby reduces that demand charge. And so, what you see here is savings on the electric bill that CalMart would see. However, if they were to deploy this project using a power purchase agreement, then, as this chart on the bottom shows here, they would still need to pay a portion of their original electric bill to the solar and storage PPA provider. So, they pay their electric bill, which has been reduced by about, I think it was roughly 30 to 50%. And then, they would pay the PPA provider. And typically, the PPAs are structured so that they are at cost. So, CalMart wouldn't pay anything extra for having the solar and energy storage. And they might even be able to secure some savings.
So, going back to the CalMart slide, supposing the baseline, supposing it's a $100 bill that day, what is the, that CalMart has to pay? What is the charge if it's a solar plus storage situation? If it's $100 on the left side, on the right side, it is, can you estimate that?
Yeah, so on the right side, it would be roughly $35 going to, let's say, PG&E. And then, if I had to take a guess, I would say maybe $60 going to the PPA provider. And then, what's the balance? About $5 in their pocket as savings.
So, maybe a 5%, approximately a 5% savings in the long run?
Yes, approximately. And these kinds of details are typically negotiated when developing the power purchase agreement contract.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, is the microgrid, is there one location that's feeding all of these different sites? Or, I think, Dawn, you alluded to, there's a microgrid at each site. I understood it to be one location.
So, we've designed this so that there will be six separate microgrids at six separate locations.
At these locations. And so, taking CalMart, for example, there would be a significant investment in solar and battery and all the infrastructure, and the return is a 5% savings to him for that energy cost?
So, while it is...
As opposed to just having diesel generators? Well, in this case, we have PG&E with their own proposal of setting up generators during this short period of time, and they're putting that cost. And they're powering the downtown. So, I'm trying to understand why CalMart would want to do that.
So, the main benefit for CalMart to doing this is that after, so they might have that $5 of savings, to use the example we were using earlier. That might be the case for the first, let's say, five years. And then, after that, their expenditure on energy would significantly reduce. So, after the, again, it comes back to how the PPA is structured. But after the system is paid back, and the investor in the system, the PPA provider, is made whole, their energy bill would go down to $35 a month, to the same numbers.
To clarify with the PPA, but to clarify with the PPA option, it removes that upfront cost because you're paying it off over that period. So, there's not the big capital upfront cost for just the 5% savings. It's like the immediate 5% savings.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
On slide number eight, where you have identified all the current and potential solar locations. So, you've been in contact, some of those that you've identified currently have solar, I believe, correct?
Correct.
And then, others, CalMart is a simple example, or the former Calmin building. Have you discussed with those property owners their level of interest? CalMart is an example in this project?
Yeah, yeah, we've talked to all of the various stakeholders. The schools already have solar, and they, I believe, they own the solar. So, there is some option that we could leverage that, and maybe just add storage to make that a microgrid. The schools were very interested in moving forward.
But their current solar array is not enough to power the school during the day?
We would have to do some more calculations on their load. And then, also, it kind of turns into that situation that we have with the fairground, where we don't know what the load would be if it was used in an emergency situation. But it's possible that we could leverage their existing solar and just add some storage.
Okay. So, understanding that we're going to be fortunate in that we're going to have a PIH installed by PG&E on PG&E's dime, which is our dime at the end of the day, as ratepayers. And understanding that that covers 2/3 of the community, but also understanding that that will be a natural gas-fed facility. We all think wildfire, we all think PSPS. You referenced, and as a concern of mine, earthquake happens, gas gets shut off, our new PIH is no longer a viable option for us. So, as a fallback position, I would say microgridding in your concept is certainly something to consider. You are not, so if we talk about the other side of the river for a moment, trying to find solutions there, you have to be site-specific, though, because you can't carry power. You can't distribute power from your microgrid on PG&E lines, correct? So, using Rancho de Calistoga, one of our mobile home parks, and I know you, appreciate you looked at the feasibility, can you put them on their roofs, et cetera? Let's say we found some other solution, somewhere to put the solar panels, or whatever, we're going to use fuel cell. How would you then get power to the individual units without using PG&E distribution lines? Or are those lines inside of the mobile home park private lines?
So, behind the meter?
Yep.
On the mobile home park side?
It's private.
It's a private distribution system.
All right. And you are, so I've heard that phrase a lot, too. In front of the meter, behind the meter? Can you just give us a quick, I think I know what that means, but go ahead.
Sure. So, when we say meter, we mean the point of connection with Pacific Gas and Electric, the utility. Pretty much, everything behind the meter is, not everything. You have a lot more flexibility with what you do because there's one customer benefiting from any type of energy infrastructure installed behind the meter. In front of the meter means it would be installed on the utility-owned side of that meter. And things become more challenging because then, whatever you're installing is affecting more than one customer. And the way our energy regulations that are written kind of prohibits that at this point in time. It prohibits a non-utility entity from deploying energy resources that benefit more than one customer.
Getting back to the CalMart example and their payback, I understand that. Did you figure out what the payback is for the city on the fire station and the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, we did. So, they're not available in this presentation. But they are in the full version of the presentation, which Mike said we couldn't go over 20 slides, so we only did 24.
But you can reference it very quickly, right?
We can.
All right. We'll get to public questions in a little bit. Sit tight.
While they're looking, Mike, our cost of power at the wastewater treatment plant is significant, is it not?
It is.
So, if we were able to reduce that, it would, actually, it would be a good thing. I guess I'm asking questions that are obvious answers. But as a percentage of the cost of operating that plant, have you any idea what the energy use is?
I'll look to Derek, but I'm going to guess that it's probably around 15%.
Can you confirm or deny that, Derek?
The monthly cost for Dennoil is about $10,000 a month for the power use bill that we paid at PG&E.
Thank you. Payback?
So, the payback on the fire station is about 13 years. And the payback on the wastewater treatment plant is 25 years, which is not great, but it is the same length as the proposed project period, which is typically 25 years, and that's the industry standard for a PV installation.
And that 25 years, 25-year payback, excuse me, is utilizing a PPA? So, there's no upfront cash from the city?
Correct.
Is that also having stored energy?
Correct. And the thing to consider there is, there are ways to operate the wastewater treatment plant more efficiently for a microgrid than perhaps the way it's being operated right now. So, for example, during a microgrid islanding scenario, so when you're disconnected from the grid, there's a grid outage and you're disconnected from the grid, it likely makes sense to operate the wastewater treatment plant when there's solar available. Whereas, right now, I believe the wastewater treatment plant is operated mostly in the evenings when energy prices are low. However, that dynamic changes when you're in microgrid island mode. Additionally, we could do some retrofitting. I'm not quite sure what's at the wastewater treatment plant right now. But we could retrofit the system with some variable frequency drives so that we can modulate the load more instead of having an on-or-off type of system. So, there are some opportunities that we can look into in more detail, should you choose to pursue the next phase.
Okay.
Emerging technologies in battery storage? I know there's a number of projects that are out there. Do you see any of that stuff coming in the next, let's say, three to five years?
I think that for this type of project, where we are intending to use energy storage for resilience as well as energy bill savings, lithium ion today really provides the best functionality to serve both of those needs. Other battery technologies that are gaining popularity include flow batteries. However, they don't have the response time that would be necessary to use the battery during the microgrid island mode. I don't want to make it too complicated, but at a basic level, your battery here is serving as the grid-forming signal. So, providing a 60 Hz, 48 volt signal. And so, lithium ion is really better suited to performing that function compared to other battery chemistries.
So, for the foreseeable future, anyway, what's there? I don't want to see us buy something and then, three years down the road, say, gee whiz, look what this does, you know?
That's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, well, probably will, yeah.
I guess the good news is batteries typically are replaced after 10 to 15 years, depending on the warranty period. So, if there's a new technology, we might be able to replace it then.
So, in its most simplistic form for me, we have these six facilities, five, six facilities. They go to this concept, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they operate solar. We go into a PSPS, doesn't matter to them. PSPS happens, we're operating on our plug-and-play station for 2/3 of the community, this side of the river. And then, worst-case scenario, we end up with earthquake, they shut off the gas, the whole city's down with the exception of these six facilities, and then, anyone else at home who happens to have solar, correct? Diesel?
Plus, a big point to me is it doesn't have a carbon footprint.
Got it. That part, I'm sorry, I should have said that. I assumed that. I just wanted to break down the tiering of level of power versus disaster.
Yeah, that's correct. The only clarification I would make is that for homeowners or businesses that have solar, your system will only remain operational during a grid outage if there is storage, as well as some way to disconnect from the grid, typically an automatic transfer switch.
Okay. Any other council members? All right, sorry.
Just real quickly, if you go to the site summary, and you have the list of the sites, and you have like the total annual energy use for, say, CalMart's the first one listed, can you just briefly go across that line and just tell me what all this means?
Yeah, certainly. So, for each site, we've looked at first the total annual energy use. To get to this number, we looked at utility bills as well as meter data from PG&E for each of the sites over a 12-month period. So, this is a total annual energy use in kilowatt-hours. The next line item, it tallies any existing solar that may be onsite. So, the elementary school as well as the high school both have solar currently.
And KWAC, what's the AC?
AC stands for alternating current.
Okay.
So, with solar systems, it's a DC source of power. So, the panel itself produces DC. And then, you have this additional piece of equipment called an inverter, which takes that direct current power and converts it to alternating current. And so, the ratings can be different, and it's just, oh, yeah, good to specify whether you're talking about DC or AC.
Okay.
The next line item is for new solar that's being proposed. So, this is in kilowatts direct current. And the total for all the sites is 1.6 megawatts. And the reason we did it in direct current is because the design of the inverter system and all that kind of comes in at a later phase. But that's how much potential there is onsite. So, we've done the work of kind of measuring how much we can fit, and that's that 1.6 megawatts. The next line item is the annual solar generation. And so, that's how much energy is produced from each of those PV systems specified in the previous column. And that is based on historical weather data. So, it's a prediction of how much solar the system will produce each year. And it's significant because of the way that interconnection is approved here in California. So, you can only, this is a high-level description, there's a lot of caveats, but I'll just say it simply. You can only... You can only install that, the amount of solar that you would use on an annual basis. So PG&E doesn't want people to install massive solar systems and then make money off of them. And then the next two columns cover battery sizing. There are two components to a battery size. The first is the power component, the units are in kilowatts, and that is typically the size of the power inverter and rectifier, it's often called a converter. And that's kind of how much instantaneous power you can put onto the grid at any one time. And then the second piece of it is the kilowatt-hours, which is the energy storage capability. So for example, a 300 kilowatt, let's just say 3,000 kilowatt-hour battery could theoretically put out 300 kilowatts for 10 hours.
I got it, okay, thank you. Fuel cells, you were pretty quick to go past that, and that was simply because they're the necessity of natural gas involved in the process, or did I misunderstand?
No, that's the reliability, but then there's also the carbon footprint piece as well. So because California has such a clean grid with the amount of renewables online, some estimates are that fuel cells are dirtier than California's grid.
Okay, and then last question before we get into the public comment. So this is what, putting on my fiscal responsibility hat, this is what $26,000 got us, right? What is the next, what's the next investment, how much? What's the next 30 get us? Do you actually build something? All of that?
Yeah, so the next phase will involve...
Okay, I got it, but in terms of will have a better sense of what the true cost to take it to the next level would be? So right now, we're looking at $10 million for this phase?
Correct, correct, as a high-level cost estimate for all of the sites together, with the understanding that the power purchase agreement would off, or I guess not require that capital expenditure, at least from the sites themselves. I think the main things I think that we need to follow up with City Manager Kern are related to the process that Calistoga would like to use going forward. He mentioned to us that typically you move forward with like a design-bid-build type of process. And so some of the items we include in our proposal might need to be adjusted to account for that kind of different build process.
Excuse me, you'll have a chance in a moment. So understanding you're just building out your first project, so your $10 million estimate is at a very high level. You haven't done enough of these to kind of scale. What's your plus or minus? Having seen a few of these before, and the $10 million start looks later like 18 million.
At this point, I would say is likely not gonna go minus. I would say probably plus 30 or so percent.
Okay. All right, with the lights on, Mr. Harkin, if you could? Can, all right, you guys good? All right, so I will open public comment, anyone has any questions or comments on this? A few caveats, you are limited to a maximum of three minutes. We politely request that you share with us your name and your address, but you're not required to do so. And please, if someone prior to you has made your point, do not feel obliged or compelled to remake the same point. With that said, public comment is open. Yes, sir. Hold on one second. Yep, and questions get directed to the council, and then we can clarify for it.
Questions directed, again, my name is Dave Ross. I'm looking at page eight. I happen to live in Rancho Calistoga, and we can spend $10 million and there's still 190 homes that don't have power. I also spent five years working on the Bay Bridge. I was a foreman on it, and to think 30% over is generous on your part. Boarding on foolhardy.
Address the council, please, thank you.
How much did the Bay Bridge start out at? Million, one and a half billion, two billion? Ended up at over six and they're still working on it? They're not close to done. San Rafael Bridge, I was a foreman on that. The bid price was $549 million. Ron Tudor walked away with a billion dollars. $500 million over, that's 50%. The industry average is between 3% and 7%. No way y'all gonna do it for physically impossible and a technology that isn't even developed yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, these are things we take into consideration because it's not our first rodeo either in terms of projects and overruns. Yes, Frank?
I just wanted to introduce Bob O'Hagan. Bob did all the solar siting survey work for us, he's one of our top engineers, so I think he was waving to make a few comments if you wouldn't mind, Mayor?
Well, just, I can address that question directly. So we talk to solar developers all the time, what is your cost for what? What does it take? We now know that their development costs are under $2 a watt, well under $2, closer to $1.50 for rooftop solar. And these are people, this is what they can go in, do their engineering assessments, all their permit-ready drawings, get it built, walk away with some profit, hand it over to the finance people. These are walk-away due prices, and that's why they were looking at known technologies. So we were looking at low risk here. What you were talking about earlier...
You have to stay closer to the mic because we have TV and address the council.
Okay, so when you're talking these other big, major industrial projects, yeah, you do tend to have cost overruns because people are pressing new technologies. And solar is well-known, lithium ion has now been made very safe, and we understand it. So the risks here, the bigger risks are just how much trenching are you gonna have to do, those types of things. And by the way, CalMart shoppers will also have the advantage of shade if we can utilize the parking lots. That is the biggest underutilized resource in this country, and I do these solar siting surveys all the time.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council? Wow, you guys did such a great job in your presentation, nobody has any questions? Really?
I think thanks to Mike a lot, his direction leadership. Mike did a great job helping us out through all this.
All right, we do have a question.
Final clarification, since you're talking numbers, out of the 10 million, can you give a perspective as to how much of it is product versus labor? So what are the big pieces of the pie?
Thank you very much. Any other questions? We'll take all your questions at once and then we turn them to have them answered. Okay. What's your breakout there? Because I think if the labor price is high, he's volunteering to do the work for free.
So unfortunately, I don't have that breakdown for you. The numbers, as Bob O'Hagan mentioned, come from developers and they're all in costs. So we don't have insight into what the breakdown between equipment, labor, engineering, all of that is. But there are numbers that we've heard from multiple developers throughout the state, so we trust that they can do it for that cost.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, with that said, I will say thank you, but before ending this session, I do want to make everyone aware that we are continuing, as I said a little bit earlier, continuing to be very aggressive and progressive about this. The city has been approached. We've made news the last few years. PG&E's made it clear that we are an island in a unique situation, so there are other organizations, other companies in the microgrid universe, experimental technology, et cetera, that are coming to Calistoga. One, I think because we've made the news for the challenges we've had. Two, because we're unique in an island. And three, it doesn't hurt that we're in wine and spa country. So if you're gonna do a project and it's a place you have to visit often, why not make it here? So we are continuing with that. So thank you guys very much, appreciate your time and your presentation, and we'll go from there. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So City Manager Kern, you need some direction from us on where we want to go?
Correct. So as presented, we're through with phase one. The next phase is to get into the detailed components of the engineering analysis and look at shed, load shedding. And then they would basically craft what the technical specifications would look like. And then phase three would be reaching out to what I'll call a design builder that would then give a proposal based on those technical specifications. It's a little bit different than what we normally do. There's, I believe, opportunity under certain statutes that would allow us to do that, but I need to have a discussion with the city attorney as to whether or not we can legally do that. Typically, for public projects, we have to go with the lowest bidder. This is moving outside of that a little bit. Caltrans has certain criteria that allows them to do that, and school districts as well. So we're a little bit in a, I won't say a new territory, but potentially could be. Just a couple of observations. The difference between the rate of return or the payback on specific pieces of the projects that they identified are primarily driven by the tax rebates and the incentives that are available to the private sector, which are not available to the public sector. So none of those would annua it to the city unless it was built into the PPA where the PPA provider is given those incentives and then passes back some of those incentives back to the purchaser of the power.
Quick interruption on that, was that calculated into the rate of return for the payback for the wastewater treatment system of 25 years? Sorry, you just have to go to the mic for home, sorry. So was the tax benefit that we're not entitled to, I assume the PPA would be entitled to, calculated in?
Correct, so for the financial modeling, we assume that all of the systems would be financed via a PPA and that a developer would be able to take advantage of the 26% investment tax credit.
Thank you.
Then lastly, there was some discussion about reducing our carbon footprint. Right now, through marine clean energy, our green footprint or our green portfolio is 60%. So meaning 60% green, 40% conventional, whatever that might be. We did ask them what would the additional cost be for the city to go deep green, which is 100% green plus a little bit extra for incentive programs, vehicle charging stations where we might go get grants to do that. Approximately $20,000 a year more than what we currently pay for the cities.
So the entire city electric program is on marine clean energies model?
You had to opt out?
Got it.
And I don't know how many people did, but for the city, if we went deep green, our additional costs would be 20 grand a year. So it's fairly nominal to wear that moniker.
But that doesn't help us with a power outage?
It does not.
Okay. In your estimates, City Manager, or vast experience and wisdom, obviously, this is a financial decision we need to make, whether we further invest in the analysis of this. How'd you characterize the deliverable to this point?
I think the challenge for me is that everything that is suggested to move forward is on the powered side of the river. Meaning, there's, there are intangible benefits to moving forward, but from a, I guess from a value engineering perspective, if somebody else is footing the bill to energize these facilities, short of a couple of hours on either side of a PSPS, that's where I would put my money. The weak link, I think, is that the dark side of the river, as we like, whatever we want to call it, the other side of the river, it's gonna be a challenge. You know, maybe a solar field on the ground adjacent to Rancho D might be able to provide some benefit. But the legislation and the way that the system moves power precludes, you know, an entity, a city, from, I guess, co-op-ing with the distribution grid. And that's where a microgrid or this kind of a concept could be more attractive in a private compound or on a school campus where they actually control the distribution system behind the meter. And they can flip the switch and be completely off the grid and self-sustaining. I believe that, you know, you hear, there's a lot of chatter taking place in Sacramento about, you know, making the distribution system public, allowing cities to take it over. I would caution that there are consequences associated with assuming those responsibilities. If it's not, if PG&E and the CPUC doesn't think that it's safe to distribute power in Tier 2 and Tier 3 areas, why would we think it would be safe? Then it creates a whole other layer of maintenance responsibility on top of the existing utilities that we're trying to own and operate. So I guess at the end of the day, my recommendation would be that while this is valuable information, we probably want to cast a bigger net to see if there are other opportunities or individuals that might have a different set of solutions related to fuel cells and/or small-scale geothermal. I don't think we've, no disrespect, but I don't think that was explored significantly enough for us to just kind of kick that to the curb.
Mike, since there are several different owners out there besides the city, there's CalMart, well, there's the fairgrounds, which mayor, which probably will be the city as well. But there's also the school district. And I'm wondering, since there are savings for those entities, if we decide to move forward with the second phase of this, if they'd be willing to come up with some funding to help out with refining this?
We can reach out to them. I think the school district would probably be the most user-friendly candidate. I'm not sure if Mr. Shaw would be willing to pony up on something that he may feel that PG&E is already taking care of for him. And the other component on this, and it was something that we asked them carefully, the proposal for the solar generation at CalMart, it's site-constrained. He only has so many square feet that you can put panels on. And it still only is able to produce about 70% of his baseload, so he would need to be, there'd need to be a business decision or value engineering that says during the use of your new facility, what are you willing to turn off so that you can, you know, maintain your operation? So he may have to turn off half his lights, he may have to throttle back on some of his cooling. That's not, the lights are probably the easiest thing to do, but if he's converted his lighting system to more energy-efficient lighting, there's probably not a whole lot of load shedding that can occur. At the wastewater treatment...
I think the basic answer is we should reach out to those people and see what they think and if they'd like to assist with continuing this study if decide to do it also.
And just, you know, from the wastewater treatment plant perspective, that's a 24/7 plant. We don't have the luxury of turning things off, you know, and only going on solar. We have made extensive investments in installing BFDs, variable speed drive pumps. We just spent a significant amount of money cleaning out the Aeration Basins, which has afforded us the ability to turn off one or two blowers, which is a significant savings there. So every opportunity that we get, we're moving forward and trying to make energy-efficient decisions. At the city level in total, we've converted all of our lighting to LED or T8 lighting. At the city level in total, we've converted all of our lighting to LED or T8 lighting, significant savings there. The parking lots at the pool, parking lots at the, the overhead lighting at the wastewater treatment plant, we've retrofitted all of that. So we take baby steps to gain, you know, initial expenditures, but on most of that lighting retrograding, the payback on those was less than two years. So within the next eight months, 100% of that saving is coming back to us. Annual savings is about $10,000.
That's on, that's on city properties.
Correct.
It would seem to me that what we would first want to do is do a debrief of what we just experienced, and I don't think we've done that collectively. I think overall, things went significantly better than, say, last year, but certainly there's some issues. So for example, the gas station's not being powered because they're on the dark side, but can they be powered by a generator? I mean, I would think they could be, and maybe the owners just didn't prepare for that. Obviously, you know, Rancho is a concern specifically because of the senior citizens there. Is there a solution? I just feel like we need to do an overall debrief of what just transpired and see where the hiccups are and see if there are solutions that are easy fixes before we embark on something that's wildly expensive. And I, it's hard for me to imagine solar panels all over Cal-Mart's parking lot. You know, there's sort of an aesthetic issue of rural downtown. I just, I also see solar panels all over Solage. I just think there'd be pushback.
So for me, there are two benefits. Obviously, there's the carbon footprint issue, so I can appreciate that, where these significant consuming facilities being solar 24/7. And I have to highlight again, we cannot fall and be lulled into this sense of complacency and safety on the generators. We are huge, huge, huge benefitters of this situation, but that's wildfire and PSPS. The first thing you shut off after the earthquake or during an earthquake is your gas, and that generator farm is no longer available to us. So that's where I see a benefit to this concept. I will agree with the city manager that there are some other, casting that wider net, there are some other organizations, other companies, other technologies that we have spoken to and we should, others that we should speak to with the attitude of carbon footprint improvement, and worst-case scenario, there's no gas line running to Calistoga to run generators or anything else, which is also something that I appreciate a lot of our residents who've gone through the effort, energy, and expense to install gas-powered generators at your homes, which is great for PSPS, but you still have to be prepared and have a fallback position with an earthquake because the main line to Calistoga gets shut down, and unless you're on an individual propane tank, you're back to where we all started. So my recommendation would be that we reach out to Councilmember Kraus's suggestion, the other stakeholders, see what their level of interest would be. At the same time, City Manager Kern, maybe accelerate some of the conversations we've had with some other organizations and other options. I mean, we're, we're in the limelight a little bit in terms of people paying attention to us, so let's take advantage of that while still keeping pressure on our friends at PG&E to build out our PIH for the short term. Anyone have any other suggestions on that direction?
Sadly, we still haven't figured out how to power up the other side of the river.
That is, you know, that's not a simple solution. That's a complete re-circuiting and rewiring of that entire side of the river.
Well, it's also proximity to the hillside--
Yeah, that's what I mean. That sends it up there.
Right. So like, I don't know if we want that side. I mean, I'm on that side of the river. Yes, I'd like power, but we don't want to start a fire over there.
No, I'm, I'm talking about powering up the stuff that is in the Level One area, which is this side of Foothill--
Yeah.
--and the other side of--
The river.
The river. So there's that area that is, I'll say, north of Foothill Boulevard, that could be powered if we could find a way to do it without--
Now, now, just getting the power out of--
The streetlights, the streetlights on that side, on the dark side, the streetlights were powered. Yes, they were.
On my neighborhood.
No, the, the old vintage lights on Lincoln Avenue Bridge--
Oh, because the power comes across the bridge.
Right. Exactly. So is that just because they're on their own power line?
Yeah, those, those four lights are on their own circuit, and it's all underground, and the point of service is behind the bus shelter.
Can't just run an extension cord through one of the conduits and plug in the dark side?
Sure, I'll just, just hang it on the, hang it on the side of the bridge, and everything will be fine.
Exactly.
We've got four or five bridges. We'll just do it all across town, right?
So if we just bring the power across the river to 1810 West Myrtle, then we're good, and we move on from there. All right. With that said, are we okay with having city staff reach out to the other potential interested parties and then, as well as some other potential providers?
Yeah, I think we need to do some more shopping. Yeah.
But what about doing, like, I do think there needs to be some sort of a debrief for just staff, like--
Of the last PSPS?
--evaluate everything that we went through and just like, what went wrong? Like, where can we improve? And are there easy fixes? Just so we know when we're comparing options.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, there are no public hearings, but we're moving on to item number eight, General Government Resolution Accepting the 2020 City Council Meeting Schedule. Recommended action, consider adopting the resolution. Council members all had a chance to look at this. Anyone have any objections, concerns, or want anything modified on this? All right. With that said, anyone in the public interested in when our city council meetings are? Exactly. With that, I'll entertain a motion on the item as presented.
I move we adopt this.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on, item number nine, last item, Resolution Ratifying the City Manager of and Director of Emergency Services Proclamation Declaring the Existence of a Local Emergency Related to the Pacific Gas Electric Power Shut Off and High Fire Risk Weather Conditions and Confirming Termination of the Local Emergency. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mike Kern, City Manager, you've got the staff report. This is similar to what you did a couple of weeks ago. Maybe just a couple of highlights. I think staff did an excellent job during this event. We did a formal opening of the EOC on Sunday morning. Staff throughout that event participated in numerous PG&E conference calls, numerous sit-ins with the Napa County EOC. We patrolled the areas that were unpowered, brought in extra public safety staff. Mitch brought in, actually, a second crew. Steve had three, three engines staffed at all times. Public Works made sure that all of our backup generators functioned. They had pre-staged fuel. So all of our critical facilities operated 24/7, nonstop, with no interruptions. I think they just did a great job. One of the things that Vice Mayor Dunstford has talked about is doing a debriefing and what might some of our options going forward be. We're evaluating what the load demand for Rancho D is on just a normal basis and what it might take to bring in a portable generator to plug in and operate that facility. We see that as both a benefit to the community, but also a benefit to the city as a whole. If we can devise or craft a solution such that those folks can basically shelter in place without a significant demand on public services, I need to go to a cooling center, I need to go to the charging station. We take away some of that level of effort that would necessarily happen if they weren't powered up. So it'd be just like status quo.
Just to clarify on that, that is something that has been in the works for, since the PSPS of 2018, so this is not something we just decided to start considering, and I'm only mentioning this specifically because of language I've heard. It's not because of this most recent event that we're considering what to do about Rancho. This has been a year in the works, the same time that we started looking for the generator system for the majority of the city. I think we've explained in great detail why we currently can't get to Rancho, but we are still working very closely on the public utility side with PG&E, as well as the private sector side, to look for solutions. But it is also going to take the participation of ownership of that to help come to a solution.
Correct.
But you have the city, the utility, the private sector, and the management of that property looking for a solution. So they are certainly not the forgotten neighborhood.
Thank you for clarifying that. It has not, this is not a new discussion.
Thank you.
It's, we're looking at all of the options that might be able to energize that facility. So I'll leave it at that. There is no longer a threat. The governor did declare a state of emergency, so there is the potential that some of our costs are eligible for reimbursement. We're putting together the dollar value of those. I think I would be remiss not to mention some of our local businesses that provided significant support. Calistoga Spa, Calistoga Roastery, Cal-Mart, Bill actually gave us the keys to the store in the event that we needed to fill our commissary. So, you know, kudos to all of those businesses that stepped up. Very much appreciate the patience of the community. And to be blunt, NICSIL is our formal notification for emergency broadcasting. So if you don't hear it from NICSIL, then it's not true. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also, Cal Spa, who you did mention, also handed over the keys to all of their rooms for our staff to be here 24/7 while we're without power. And there's not a single member of the city's staff, whether they be public safety, public works, administrative, that did not step up to the plate, and they were fantastic. And the EOC was operating, and the goal was to be in charge, be in control, but not convey any sense of distress or urgency as people went about their business throughout town. But we were in direct contact with the county OES, with the Incident OES, Officer Incident Command over in Sonoma County, which is where the Kankata fire was from. And we got to an advisory, but I will say now that it's all over, on two different occasions, we were about that close from a mandatory. So it is something that was paid attention to very significantly, and our, our fire team and police department did a fantastic job, especially in dispatch while I was there helping with some of the NICSILs. Those phone calls were fast and furious, and I suggested they keep a log of odd questions because they certainly had a whole bunch for a book to be published later. So, thank you. So you need from us a closure of the, adopt the resolution?
Resolution.
Okay. Anyone in the public, any questions or comments on this item? All right. Closed public comment. Entertained a motion as presented.
I'll move.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We will now adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be November 19th at 6:00 PM in this same facility. Thank you. If anyone's hungry, please take that food home, or it goes in the garbage. Adjourned.
Thank you.